Okay. Everyone, please silence your phone as to not disturb the meeting. And I call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the 34th City Council for February 8th, 2022 at 7:30 PM. Would the clerk please call it a roll?
Councilmember Hamud.
President.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember Al-Sawafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Councilwoman Leslie Herrick.
Thank you, Council President Serini. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Father Anthony Popowski from St. Clement's Eastern Orthodox Church, who will give the invocation at tonight's meeting. Everyone who is able, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. It's new and old, however, chief of the Police and Fire Department. It's a great honor for me to be with all of you tonight. Let us pray to the Lord. Lord, have mercy. Almighty God, our help and refuge, the fountain of wisdom and tower of strength, who know that we can do nothing without your guidance and help, assist us and direct us to divine wisdom and power that we may fulfill this service of our city, our community, our state, our country diligently and according the law of our country, so our work may be profitable for this community. For you is the kingdom and the power and the glory of the Father and of the Son of the Holy Spirit, now and forever and unto the ages of ages. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Father. Can we have the first item of business?
Item number four, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Burns approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of January 25, 2022.
All set? I didn't see. I'm sorry. You all said, George, I didn't hear the last three. I apologize.
Oh, do you want me to read item four?
Yeah, I heard part of it. I just didn't say the last part about you said regular scheduling meeting for the January 25th?
2022.
Just one? Okay, I thought there was multiple. I apologize.
Council President.
Yes, Councilman.
If I could on that, just within due respect to the clerk and everybody else, I just happened to notice on the minutes for the last meeting of January 25th, it was council item 0172-22, ordinance 22-1729 to be taken from the table. But that is in regards to amending the ordinance for the Department of Public Health. If you look upon a roll call vote as follows, it says yeas, Abraham, Al-Sawafi, Burns, Hamud, Herrick, Paris, and Serini. And actually, I voted nay on that, so if the minutes could be changed to reflect that.
We will do that.
Thank you so much.
Anything else, Councilman Paris?
No.
Okay, so clerk, that should be a modification. You'll take care of that, is it correct?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Any other questions or concern on the minutes, modifications or deletions? Okay. Unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item number five, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 22-1724, an ordinance to amend the licenses and business regulations within Chapter 4, 5, 12, 15, and 17 of the Dearborn Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Al-Sawafi to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, unanimous roll will be taken, will be attached, take it to take from the table. The city clerk's office conducted a review of Chapter 12 licensing and business regulations in an effort to update a long overdue fees, some from the 1980s and aligned with neighborhoods, neighboring cities, and to the true cost of the city to appropriate these fees. The ordinance also corrects various subsections to references of all fees within Chapter 12-6. The city clerk is responsible for issuing licenses or regulations for more than 100 fee categories of businesses conducted in Dearborn. The proposed fee increases are projected to recapture approximately $68,000 for the 2023 fiscal cycle to help cover the operations of the city clerk's department. This is the second final reading on this ordinance. Do we have any questions or concerns from my colleagues? Okay, any questions from the public? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading, please?
Yes, this is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1725 entitled, "An Ordinance to Amend the Licenses and Business Regulations Within Chapter 4, 5, 12, 15, and 17 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn."
Okay, roll call, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember Al-Sawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Seven yeas, the ordinance passes.
Okay, next item, please.
Item number six, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 22-1739, an ordinance to amend the licenses and business regulations, Chapter 12, by amending Article 26 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn, entitled, "Prohibition of Marijuana Establishments", resolution by councilmembers Hamud and Al-Sawafi to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached, taking from the table. And this is removing a sunset provision from the ordinance which we have opted out of recreational marijuana under the Michigan Regulatory and Taxation of Marijuana Act, which is called abbreviated MRTMA. There is no longer a requirement for the city council to revisit the ordinance each year. However, the council will schedule a study session after completing the city budget to better understand the fiscal impact. This is the second and final reading on this ordinance. Do we have any questions or concerns from my colleagues? Any questions from the audience? Okay. Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1739 entitled, "An Ordinance to Amend the Licenses and Business Regulations, Chapter 12, by amending Article 26 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn, entitled, 'Prohibition on Marijuana Establishments.'"
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember Al-Sawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Seven yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item seven, resolution by councilmembers Al-Sawafi and Hamud, awarding a contract to Spalding D. Dedector Associates, Inc., in the amount of $158,673.33 for construction engineering services, also approving MDOT's third-party agreement, engineering job number 2021-027, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract on behalf of the city and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, it's my understanding that the finance and engineering departments are requesting that these items be split into two. Are they here to speak on these items? Thank you.
You know, Spatell City Engineer, actually, there are three items. Two are what you read it. There's one more item, MDOT contract. That's a third item. We need approval for that, too. So there is MDOT contract for $1 million.
Yeah.
That needs approval, too, so it's not included in there.
Okay, let's see if that's in the backup, too.
Yeah, it should be in the backup.
All right.
It should be these.
Because I have it as two, I have it as you wanted to, okay, I see three.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, does everybody have it in the backup? I have it. It says, "A request for the contract is one, two is awarded construction to Spalding, and third is the third-party agreement."
And the one more is MDOT contract for $223,000. This should be attached to your letter, too.
So you're saying there's four of them now?
There are three. One is Spalding Decker contract, one is third-party agreement.
All right, well, let's make sure the clerk has that, because I have it as, yeah.
Yeah, so what I read was two out of the three, and then I'm prepared to read another resolution if you'd like me to.
Oh, you were, okay.
For the other one, Council President, we'll just need an offer and support for the next one.
All right, but if we're going to split these up, we're going to, we're going to have to do them, you want to do them A, B, C?
Well, we, I've read the, I've read the one already, so if you'd like, I can read it. The second one has seven B, and then, and then we'll just need an offer and support, and we'll be offside.
Okay.
We just need A and B. A has a two item, B has got one item.
Okay, yeah, we just read A, so we could determine that to be seven A, which would be the first two items.
Yes.
And then I'll read another resolution for the B part, which would be the third item.
Sounds good.
Okay, but, Mr. Clerk, I think they wanted the first part that you read split into two. Is that not correct? Because I, you read they want that into two. Is that correct?
No, no, that's not correct. The third item was missing. That's, the number three was missing in the resolution, so I won't include it. So that's what it is.
Mr. Clerk, why don't you, let's see what, how we're going to handle this, because do you have three items now or two? Because this one that you just read, you're saying that's one item.
It's two items and three parts.
That's two items. That's two out of the three items.
Okay, so how do you, how would you like this?
Okay, so, so we have an offer and support on that one already, so you can ask for unanimous roll call on that one, and that'll be done.
Okay, so let's, let's do that first. Unanimous roll, this is going to be unanimous roll attached to take from the table, correct?
No, this, this is just unanimous roll call to move the resolution forward. Is that correct, Jeremy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. But that's, the contract first, this, this is for the city engineering staff that prepared the drawings for the Schaefer Road between Prospect. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And 94?
Yes.
And you submitted to MDOT for the bid out?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. And then the project includes the hot, let me just read it in here, hot asphalt, cold milling, and resurfacing, concrete paving, retaining walls, signing, fencing, and everything else to complete the project, which is going to be administered through the federal aid project?
Correct.
Okay, so is that, that's one and two, clerk?
Yes, that would be, that would be now deemed as seven A, which would be one and two.
Okay. Any my colleagues have any questions or concerns on that item?
Again, let's make sure very clear, the seven A item got contract with Spalding Decker, $158,000, and in order to get our 80% back, we need to execute third-party agreement with MDOT.
Yes.
That's item A, includes one and two, and MDOT contract, million-dollar contract, is by itself B.
Yes, correct. But I'll read B now, because I haven't read B yet.
Okay, but you need, you need a unanimous roll first, right?
That's correct.
All right, do we have any questions for my colleagues regarding the splitting of these contracts? Any questions from the audience? Oh, Councilman Al-Sawafi?
I just have a question on the reimbursement. Is this going to affect reimbursement at all with the federal aid?
Not at all.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Councilman Swaffey. Any other questions? Okay, unanimous roll will be attached here, no objection.
Okay, now, I'm going to read seven B.
Correct.
Resolution in need of offer and support, approving MDOT contract number 21-5441 with the city share in the estimated amount of $223,962 for hot mix asphalt cold milling and resurfacing work along Schaefer Road from I-94 to Prospect Avenue, job number 2021-027, and requesting immediate effect.
I'll offer.
I'll support.
Offered by Councilman Abraham, supported by Councilwoman Burns. Again, this item is indicated by the clerk and is reimbursed through the federal government project at an 81.85%.
This is going to be done by MDOT, so MDOT will pay directly to contractor, and they are going to bill us our share.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from my colleagues? Okay, clerk, you have, unanimous roll will be attached?
Okay.
Okay, next item.
Item number eight, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Paris, awarding a contract to GNJ Services in the amount of $33,600 for public restroom renovations at Hubbard East and West, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the housing, I'm sorry, unanimous roll will be attached to take from the table. The Housing Department initiated the renovation of the public restrooms at the Hubbard Manor West and East as a response to our facility assessment that was completed January 11th of 2021. The existing public restrooms are from original state from 1970s, and the renovation will improve the building's accessibility and bring the restrooms up to compliance with the American With Disabilities Act, which is ADA. Through the bid, it is recommended that the award of the contract to GNJ Services in the amount of $33,600, who has performed successfully for the city in the past, and upon approval, the restrooms will be completed in four to six weeks. Any questions or concerns from my colleagues on this? Yeah, comment, Councilwoman Burns?
Thank you, Council President. Just thanks to our housing team. I think to say that these restrooms are retro would be an understatement. I know this is long-awaited and much-needed work being done. I'm very excited to see the ADA compliance and just accessibility, as of course, you know, most of the folks who are living in these buildings in Hubbard Manor East and West are at or beyond retirement age, and I think many of the folks who visit tend to be as well. So I think this is really a step in the right direction for folks who utilize the building now and certainly far into the future. So thank you to our team.
Mr. Shay, do you have anything to add?
I want to say thank you so much. Good evening to everybody. Thank you so much, and DPW Director Tim Hawkins and his team are doing excellent work.
All right, thank you. Okay, any questions or concerns from the audience or public? Okay, unanimous, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item number nine, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Paris, awarding a contract to Dingus Fire Company in the amount of $51,119.29 for fire nozzles and saw accessories for the fire department, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached, taken from the table. This purchase is to replace current equipment that is aging and in some cases past its useful life. These items are being purchased through the assistance of firefighters' grant funds, and the AFG funding covers 90% of the cost, with the remaining 10% provided by the city. Purchasing these items will ensure that the fire department is properly outfitted to current, current standards and the functioning, the functioning tools and equipment. Dings is a new vendor to this, vendor to the city, and the bid was evaluated by the assistance of key staff from the fire department, and the procurement process was in accordance with the procurement ordinance and all internal policies and procedures. Any questions or concerns from my colleagues? Any questions from members of the audience? Okay, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 10, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Al-Sawafi, awarding a contract to DTEC International USA in the amount of $38,235 for the purchase of a smart locker system for the Henry Ford Centennial Library, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached, taken from the table. At the January 25th, 22 council meeting, the council acknowledged the receipt of the American Rescue Plan Act grant, which is HARPA funds, which will pay, pay for 39 smart lockers. These smart lockers will provide the library material pickup through a self-service model for available 24 hours, seven days a week at the Henry Ford Centennial Library. DTEC International USA interface is compatible with the library's integrated library systems to ensure seamless operation. Existing staff will manage the lockers, which will require annual maintenance of $1,500. The lockers are expected to be implemented around spring and summer of this year. DTEC International is found to be, to have submitted the most responsive bid. However, while it was not the lowest bid, DTEC provides the highest cost benefit to the city per dollar spent. Therefore, it is requested to approve the award with the contract with DTEC International USA in the amount of $38,235 from the HARPA grant funds. Any questions or concerns from my colleagues? Questions from the public? Okay, Councilman Al-Sawafi?
Ms. Bartels, if you're available, can you step to the podium?
Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening.
Mary Ann Bartels, Library Director. When we were closed for COVID, we provided curbside service to our patrons, and they really liked it. And so we saw this opportunity to get a grant, and we, we got it. And so now we will have these smart lockers at Centennial, very similar to the lockers that are at Salina School. A person can request their material, tell, tell us that they want to pick it up at the smart locker, scan their library card, the locker pops open, they take their books, and it's automatically checked out to them. And then they can, of course, return them into the drop box, which is at Centennial. I think it's, it's a great service, especially for our seniors and our really busy people that, that don't want to come all the way up to the circulation desk to get their material. So we're really pleased that we were able to get the grant.
That's amazing. Thank you for moving the library forward. I was going to ask how this system was going to work, but you answered, as we talked earlier.
Thank you. Yeah, we're really excited about it. Thank you.
I'm excited as well. Thank you so much.
And thank you, Councilman Serini, for your email about the Library Love Campaign.
Were you okay with that?
Oh, it was perfect.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I've been, audio, audiobooks are for me.
That counts, because that's what I do.
All right, I put my headphones on and took the photo. Thank you.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you very much. Unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
I had one question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Councilman Hamud? I apologize. Councilman Hamud had a question.
So, yeah, so I just had one question, which was, after approval of this contract, is there a timeline for when the service is going to be available to residents?
Well, supply, supply chain issues are always an issue right now. The company has said that they will get the locker to us as soon as possible. I'm hoping within the next three months. Then, we've already reached out to our city electrician to make sure he can do the hookups. We plan on putting a, like a heat map underneath the locker, so that when people come up to it during the winter, they're not going to slip and fall. So it's, all that has to be installed. I'm really hoping that we'll have it by mid to late summer.
Okay, thank you.
The backup also indicates that as well, as I said, summer, yeah, I had it read into a spring and summer timeframe.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping, but, you know, things are a little tougher.
Everything's fluid right now, yeah.
Yes, yes, for sure. Thank you.
Councilman Hamud, good?
Yeah, I, I just also noticed the bid we went for here is not necessarily the lowest, but has the highest cost benefit to the city, so I appreciate that consideration went into choosing the bidder on this one.
Yeah, a lot of it had to do with the interface, as we indicated in the memo that.
It was the interface and the positioning of the locker, because we have limited space. And the second solution that we were given, that interfaces, would just cause some blind spots that we were not comfortable with.
Yeah, well, I'm glad you did look into that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay. Any other questions or concern from my colleagues, public? Okay, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 11, resolution by councilmembers Al-Sawafi and Hamud, authorizing repair costs in the amount of $46,975 for emergency water and sanitary line replacement at the police department. Also authorizing the finance director to recognize and appropriate a transfer in the amount of $46,975, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached, taken from the table. The police department headquarters experienced, building experienced several sanitary line backups. It was discovered that the underground sanitary piping to the building, which is 70 years old, was failing due to its age and corrosion within the pipes. Due to the risk of damage and potential collapse of the sanitary pipe, the police headquarters, to the police headquarters, as well as the connected 19th District Court Building, purchasing cleared Phase 1 of the work under the emergency program procedure in December of 2021. Council's request is requested to authorize the repair costs, recognize the appropriate, appropriate, and transfer to, transfer from the general fund, the grant and finance direct authorization to recognize a transfer in the amount of $46,975. Phase 2 of the work will go, will go through the regular purchasing process as normal. Any questions or concern from my colleagues on this? Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, so one of the reasons why this was an interesting item for me is, I mean, I've been to the police headquarters recently for the first time, I actually got back there into the office, and, you know, having worked in a professional environment for quite a while in Dearborn, it was kind of surprising to me kind of how the office setup was, and I was like, this looks kind of outdated to me, and then I found out that it had just been renovated. So I think, you know, not only do we want to make Dearborn a great place to live, but I think it's important that we make sure that Dearborn's a good place to work as well, which is part of the reason why, you know, in the COW, I asked for, of our facilities internally to understand what kind of improvements need to be made. This is an example of a lack of investment in our own city administrative infrastructure, and if we want to be able to recruit people like good police officers, like good public servants, I think it's important that people realize that we do need to invest internally on making our office buildings and workplaces minimum safe, but it would be better if they were even comfortable in a good place to work for people, because when you walk in, you want to feel welcome into your workplace. So Dearborn is a, we want to make it a good place to work, too, here in this government. So I appreciate that the administration is starting to put a priority on these types of work, and I look forward to more projects like this in the future.
Appreciate it. Any other questions or concerns by my colleagues? Any questions from the public? Okay, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 12, resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Burns, renewing the first of two one-year renewal options with Professional Services Industries, Inc., in the amount of $175,000 for geotechnical testing services, resulting in a new expiration date of December 31st, 2022, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached, taken from the table. Laboratory and onsite testing of hot, hot mix asphalt and concrete paving, onsite testing for sewer trenches and for pavement sub, subbase and subgrade are performing surface and performing subsurface investigations or required quality control measures for all major construction projects. Professional Services Industries Incorporated submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bid and has satisfactorily performed these services for the city over the last five years. This is a renewal in the amount of $175,000. Payment for these services will come from the approved budget of the respective capital project. Any questions or concern from my colleagues? Any questions from the public? Okay, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 13, resolution by councilmembers Hamud and Al-Sawafi, authorizing a cooperative purchase from Spartan Distributors in the amount of $101,674 for two Toro Green Masters and one Toro Sand Pro to replace aging equipment at Mystic Creek Golf Course. Also authorizing the finance director to approve or to appropriate $3,884 of the Department of Recreation Mystic Creek Division's fleet and replacement reserve balance to the recreational, Recreation Fleet Operation Equipment Fund, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached, taken from the table. Again, Mystic Creek Golf Course needs to replace the aging grounds, groundkeeping equipment, which has been in service between 14 and 20 years and is nearing the end, the end of its useful life. It has been recommended to purchase two Toro Green Masters and one Toro Sand Pro from Spartan Distributors to replace the aging equipment. Total price of these three pieces of equipment is $101,673.71, and it is a state pricing contract through a cooperative bid. It is requested the finance director be authorized to appropriate $3,884 of the Department of Recreation Mystic Creek Division's fleet fund and replace, replacement reserve balance to the Recreation Fleet Operation Equipment Fund. Any questions or concerns from my colleagues on this? Councilman Hamud, then Councilman Paris?
Yeah, so there was a request for information on this from the COW, and I saw it was still open and pending, wasn't it? I didn't, I guess the question would be to the administration, oh, well, did the new director?
I can answer it.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Good evening, Dan Plamond, interim director for recreation. Good evening, Council President, Mayor, members of the council. How can I answer your question?
Well, I think the question.
The question was about the current two, can you speak to the condition of the current two? There should have been the four-page response that.
Yeah, the four-page response is here. It's in the backup. I don't think, did you get it?
Yeah, no, I, I saw this now, but I think, I had wanted the new director to take a look at this.
The, the new director starts at the end of the month.
Okay, so is this, are, are you sure this is something you want to move forward with
Okay, so is this, are you sure this is something you want to move forward with before you have your new director on board?
As an administration, we're not putting anything on the agenda from our administration that we're not supportive of. All right.
Right, yeah. I think, you know, it's a good question, but we did have a lot of questions regarding the dollar amount of this. And if you recall, the mayor was adamant about the profitability of the Mystic Creek course. And I've been out there.
Yeah.
You know, the rentals for the weddings and things now that the COVID has. Well, we'll see how it's going, you know. Don't want to really talk about that one, but. And that he indicated that that's the fact that they're in the black and because it is so needed. I'm not an avid golfer, but these are crucial pieces of equipment. We did talk about the, I think the other part was what we're going to do with the leftover equipment. That was the issue. And I seen the pictures here.
Yes.
Because remember, I indicated if they were 15, 20 years old, they're not going to be worth parts.
Correct.
So what did you, I see something here tied with a bungee cord.
Yeah, so that's to keep the gate, the deck of the mower up in the off season so it's not resting on the ground.
Yeah.
But we did go meet with the course superintendent, Tyler Cooper. We went out there and looked at the pieces of equipment. We did confirm that, yes, the pieces that are there do need to be disposed. So we will go through that disposal process.
Yeah, we want to make sure that we get from purchasing an active list, as we had in the previous council regarding all these dispositions.
Yes.
And just for the record too, as I indicated at the committee, the whole meeting, you know, Mystic Creek has golf carts that are rented.
Correct.
Leased, correct?
Leased.
So they have been, we have constantly been updating up there. So to make sure that it's, because it is a draw for the camp. As down here in our local course, Dearborn Hills, we have those are purchase carts.
Correct.
So we did have some discussion on length. I'm comfortable with it. I know it's a big purchase, but I wanted to make sure that the information, I know that you got this to us the best you could, and I understand you're filling in, so we do appreciate it. Councilman Paris?
Yes, if I could, interim director Plamond. And I know we talked during the committee of the whole about the equipment as council president Serini made mention of the condition of the equipment and what do we do with it. My concern is now too, reading the material, that it will take at least nearing six months to be able to get the equipment. Are we having enough equipment that we can make the golf course presentable during the heat of the summer and before we even get this equipment, for one?
Yeah, so for, the quick answer is yes. So we have, for a 27-hole course, we have multiple mowers to do the job. What it really boils down to is once we get the two newer pieces of equipment, there'll be less maintenance that'll be required with newer equipment. So we will do the best we can with the equipment we have and make sure that Mystic Creek maintains the level that it has.
And we did talk about it a little bit, but what is the final disposition of the equipment that we do currently have that we want to get rid of?
So the state of those two pieces, three pieces of equipment are between 14 and 20 years old. The hours well exceeded the manufacturer's lifespan. So we will be putting those through the disposal process once we take ownership of the new pieces of equipment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from my colleagues? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the public? Okay, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 14, resolution by council members Abraham and Hamud, authorizing the finance director to appropriate $350,000 of sewer fund retained earnings to fund additional system repair and maintenance in fiscal year 2022 and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, unanimous rule will be attached, taken from the table. Both the public and private sewers are between 70 and 100 years old in the city, and most were constructed with two-foot-long pipes jointed with caulking material causing failures in the system that results in sinkholes. The sewer repair program is, program that is instituted by the city is subsidized program, which is funded through, is funded through the city sewer fund and contributes more than 50% of almost all private sewer repairs per council ordinance to reduce the burden to our residents. The fiscal year of 2022 adopted budget totaled $920,000 for sewer repairs and maintenance, and at this date remains approximately $58,050 in the fund. The city engineering and finance department are estimating that additional, an additional $350,000 would, will be needed for repairs for the remainder of the current fiscal year. Any questions or concerns on this one? Mayor, just for a point of contact too, last, and I think from our engineering department, we had requested during the flooding that we did submit for some reimbursement from the federal government regarding this. So I don't know if that has, anybody had any update on that because this was a big issue with sinkholes popping up all over the city.
So I think as Michael comes up, I do know that the fire chief updated me today, I think, and finance, he got an update from finance. I think Michael will speak to it, that we have numbers for pending FEMA reimbursement for the flooding and/or COVID. So I'll allow Michael to speak to it.
Good evening, council, council president, mayor, Michael Kennedy, finance director. That process is in the works currently. We're working, we have weekly calls with the FEMA representative. We've had a scoping meeting, so we're in like stage four, maybe three out of five. So we're submitting the projects with the costs that we did incur and awaiting approval and then reimbursement.
Okay, great.
And we're also submitting any new projects that come up because of the flooding, right? Any new sinkholes, any additional things that come up because of the flooding damage that's now surfacing. We're also trying to be proactive and submit that.
I appreciate that, mayor, because I had brought that forward on the last council. And for me, I wanted our residents to understand too, the basic of this so that they, you know, a lot of cities do not do this. You go outside and you see you got a sinkhole in your house. And most cities say if it's on your property, you know, unfortunately, it's your problem. Well, this council and the council before has instituted always where we had a cap. I believe it's close to $2,000 we would have the resident pay, and then we would pick up the difference. And sometimes that exceeded $5,000 and $7,000 to dig out your backyard and replace that line because of the old infrastructure. And of course, with the amount of rain we had during the flooding, we had these things popping up all over. And I'm glad that we passed that resolution and it's continuing now. I hopefully will get reimbursement from FEMA from that as well. But for the resident, it puts a cap for them and it allows them not to go out looking for contractors to do this work. And it's a win-win for our residents, so I appreciate it.
And I'll bring up one more thing since we're just speaking on flooding broadly.
Yeah.
The RFP that the previous council requested about the assessment of our current sewer system and potential solutions. So largely drafted under the previous administration. My administration provided some feedback to the RFP. Before we actually put it out, we're going to send it to council since it was largely a council request to ask for your feedback to the actual request for proposal before it's put out. So look for that hopefully any day now in order for you to provide us your feedback on the entirety of the proposal before it actually goes out for bid.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. We will be looking for it. I appreciate that. Councilman Paris?
Council president Serini, thank you. And to the council president making comment about the sinkholes. Am I correct then to originally, some of this came to council a while back? And I believe there was like 125 sinkholes at that time?
Yeah, it started off absolutely. I asked for it when we had the meeting in the Civic Center, or I'm sorry, Performing Arts Center. And we had our engineering there and they said, because we started getting calls. We had a gentleman who, you know, said his kids were outside, the hole was humongous. And one of them where we had a garage that was underneath it, and there was a lot of issues.
And then I believe the DPW director at that time came back again.
Yeah.
For, I believe, another 50 or 75 or so.
Yeah, he's here, he can answer.
Do we have an idea how many sinkholes that we have to date approximately to account for? And I know we don't have an accounting for everything.
125,000. So we're going to get some more, so about another 40 or 45. So that's what we have right now.
Do we know a total that we have?
About right now, 158.
Okay.
But we don't have authorization beyond 125.
That's right.
So we'll come back to you.
Right, right. Because the other council had a concern how big it was and everything. And we made that abundantly clear, that a sinkhole of any size would be covered, and we had to get it done.
So we will, we'll come back to you once we have accurate number. Right now, 125,000. That's what we have right now.
If I may, council president, just one more remark.
Yes, mayor.
Ground flooding, not technically this agenda item. We've also sent a letter to some residents where there's some road work happening now on the sewer system that the contractor can provide them a discounted option to put in the backflow preventer for those holes.
Oh, that's excellent.
It's traditionally about $3,000 to $4,000. But since the contractor is digging up the road, the residents will be able to opt in to do it for 1,500. However, it's obviously the liability is on the residents, so they have to maintain the annual maintenance. But we have drafted a letter. The letter has gone out. We're also providing it in multiple languages. So just wanted to let the council know we are continually working on flood mitigation. And so this is just one additional thing that we'll be providing residents as we move forward, as their streets get dug up.
We just began today, one, very first one today.
Correct.
That's excellent, mayor. I appreciate, I know that we also, in the last meeting, we had those flaps that you, that we installed, that it was part of an agenda item. But can we get a copy of that letter? Because I think that's crucial. And I know, I'm sure legal was involved. Part of the concern was who, you know, that they do require maintenance. Remember, we talked about whether it was inside, outside. And I'm good with it because I think we're doing the right thing by offering it. I do believe we should offer that service, and it makes sense when the ground is dug up. But if our corporation counsel, our attorney can send us a copy of that letter just so that the council, to all councils, so that they could be aware that this letter is circulating to our residents and hopefully. I do believe there is a solution. As we talked before, some people didn't believe there's a solution to this. But backflow preventers are a significant solution. There wasn't something new. I mean, FEMA was talking about it from the past. So I appreciate, mayor, your leadership in doing this immediately. I mean, there's no better time than when you're, you have the ground dug up right there.
That's correct.
So, and I think $1,500 is a reasonable, that includes.
It's about, I mean, it might vary, so.
Might vary?
I can just.
Includes the part? I know, I know, but it's, includes the part, includes the completion.
It's largely discounted, yes.
It's very, it's very reasonable.
It's subsidized because the hole is already excavated.
That's correct. Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you, mayor. Any other questions from my colleagues? Okay, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 15, resolution by council members Hamud and El-Sawafi, authorizing the finance director to appropriate $237,236 of general fund balance for associated salaries and benefits of newly appointed directors and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, unanimous rule will be attached, taken from the table. On January 3rd, 2022, the city council set the salaries of the mayor appointees and confirmed the appointees of a corporation counsel and the chief labor negotiator in accordance with the city charter. The newly elected, newly, I'm sorry, newly approved executive appointee, appointee organization and departments. It is necessary that to appropriate half the annual approved salary and related benefits for the newly curated department directors as follows. Mayor's department, $90,695. Philanthropy and grants department, $72,126. Communications department, $2,289. Community relations department, $72,126 for the total of $237,236. It is requested that the finance director be authorized to appropriate the stated amount of $237,236 of the general funds, fund, fund balance for associated salary and benefits of the newly appointed directors. And the mayor has committed to increases in operational efficiencies and service restructuring is also being implemented right now. Any questions from my colleagues? Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, council president. We are, have been told that in, during the planning and the introduction from the mayor's office regarding these new positions, that funding for the positions that goes above and beyond what the previous budget that had been set for these departments and then in addition for the new departments, the funding for those positions was going to come largely from existing positions that are not currently filled from the 2021 budget. And I have received, I have requested now three times, albeit in the last week, the list of positions that are open, that had been put into the budget from 2021 and that those funds are what are going to be used to pay these salaries. We have not yet received that list of positions and the corresponding amounts for those positions that are open right now. And I would really like to see what those are before I vote on this.
If I may, council president.
Yes, mayor.
To the councilwoman. In my understanding, I know the chief of staff communicated, we're doing a full staff assessment so I can provide an old funded vacant list. And that's fine. These are funded positions that are vacant. In our staff assessment that every director and every department is currently doing, we still have a hiring freeze in place. And so we've only approved a few positions that we think are absolutely necessary to the operations of the city, but we have not opened up all the positions back to be posted. And so in doing our full staff assessments, that the list of positions that we are going to fund in this next budget is going to look starkly different than the list of funded vacancies that were approved previously. Some may come over, some may not, which is why we haven't, you know, the list hasn't come forward because it's not applicable, if that makes sense. Because it's no longer going to be applicable under the new organizational structure. And so it just, I'm happy to provide you with a list. It's just not applicable to the new organizational structure. There's about $1.2 million in general fund.
Right.
Employee funded vacancies that we have not, you know, pushed forward. There's been a few. I think one in like DPW or so, one in tech and innovation as necessary, as needed, again, to absolutely move forward and for public safety and emergency personnel. So we can provide you with a list.
And mayor?
I just want to preface, it is not applicable, given the full staff assessment that's happening in the city.
All right, mayor, I'm sorry, before councilwoman can, I'm sure you might want to respond here. But we did have meetings, several of them, from going back to the 28th. And I think Mr. Kennedy is here. We were under, is it not, is that not true that we were under the impression that 1.2 or 1.3 million was budgeted unfilled positions? Is that correct?
Correct. These are funded positions that are still open and vacant.
Okay. So.
Right, and that was the list of positions that I was hoping to see because I know that they're going to change. I mean, we know that with, with any budget process, they're going to change from year to year. People's responsibilities change. Some positions might not be needed because of the way you're reallocating responsibilities on staff. But in the meantime, we've been told that's where the money is coming from to pay for these positions for the remainder of this year that were not funded in the 2021 budget. So the money's got to come from somewhere. And if that's where it's coming from, I'd like to see the positions that haven't been filled, for whatever reason, to date.
So I'm happy to provide you that list, and I think maybe we'll clarify with Michael about the funding source, if that makes sense. So if Michael, maybe you can speak to the funding source for these dollars?
So the funding source are all general fund, as we've talked about. The budget adoption resolution that you passed in June specifically states funds cannot be moved between departments.
Right.
That's why we're going about it this way. Any remaining open funds unused will fall to the general fund, fund balance at the end of the year.
Right.
Now, in the mayor's case, with, you know, a new staff member, there's not enough budget to cover that. They're maybe in other areas. But alls I did when I did this is look at the outgoing person that was in the position and calculate the difference, or if it was a new position. So the mayor and philanthropy and grants and community relations are all new. You see communications, I calculated a small $2,289 difference that was needed. So I took that into consideration when we put this together.
Well, I appreciate that because there's some in the past felt that this was not necessary to be done, that they could move money within side of departments. And I think that was my suggestion last council and that we had to get the legal department involved, that they cannot do that. So I am glad that you did bring this forward. So I hope that satisfies the questions. It makes perfect sense. Is that you're bringing in the allocation because it's required, that you can't move it even though it's there. And I, and I think that's the biggest point because we had some perception in the other department and the other administration that you can move wherever you want. And we had to have the city attorney send them a memo that they can't do that. And that was the last meeting because some of you guys remember you were there and you voted for the position. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that you can't do that. You got to do what they're doing here, and I appreciate that you're putting it. What you're indicating is that money's there, but you, because of the rules of the council and the rules of the budget, you cannot move it. You have to reallocate it. Is that correct?
Correct. That's why it's presented that way.
Thank you. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, council president. I do have to thank Councilwoman Herrick for bringing this forward for clarification. And I'm glad the finance director did come up to explain because I was a little bit hesitant to go along with this. And the explanation that you're giving makes a little bit more sense to me. And I do, did read the material. I'm going to go forward with this, to be honest, just because of the explanation that's been given.
I appreciate it.
And I do understand, you know, we did have unfilled positions in going forward, even though I may have had some questions about some of the positions. But we need to go forward as a city, so I'm willing to go along with this at this time.
Thank you, Councilman Paris. Any other questions from my colleagues?
I just have a comment.
Councilman Neighbors?
Just as you referred council president back to the memo from legal regarding the resolution and the budget appropriation at the end of last year. My recollection is pretty clear. I do not believe that what was in front of us was moving money from one department to another. I don't believe that, that that's ever been allowable without council approval. I don't believe that's ever been done without council approval. What was in front of us was funding a position within one department. I believe it was PMADS back then, right? So it was moving money from unused positions in that department to a position that was being filled in that department. And I agree with what you're saying. We don't want money being transferred from department to department, but I do not believe at all that was what was in front of the previous council in December, that there was a transfer of funds between two different departments.
Do you agree that the transfer between the two, in the department was deemed to be illegal?
Do I believe it was, I believe the, whatever the corporation counsel opinion was. I, I mean, I'm not going to dispute corporation counsel.
Okay, Mr. Romer, can you, can you inform us of what the, what was the resolve of that last meeting? No, let him, let him, you brought it up.
Can I finish my comment? Because I don't know, I didn't say I was done.
I thought you were.
Well, you started talking, but that doesn't mean I'm done.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought you said that you believe whatever the, whatever the council, corporation counsel said. So I'd like to hear what you said.
You asked me a question.
But we're going to finish, yeah.
You asked me a question. I'd like to respond.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Okay. So whatever the corporation counsel, he represents the council and the city.
The mayor, yeah.
Right, okay? All I'm trying to point out is I don't believe the topic that was in front of us was that funds were being moved from one department to another department, which is what you stated at the beginning of the introduction of this item.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. That's not what I stated. What I stated is you can't move money anywhere. And that's very prudent because they're asking. The corporation counsel wrote a memo because a 30-years, a 30-year employee of the city, since you want to bring it up, chief of staff, indicated we can do that. And I said you cannot move that money because it's an unbudgeted position. Plus, that's subject to the HR investigation right now in the civil service department. The city attorney indicated that even with inside the department, you cannot move that because it was an unbudgeted department, unbudgeted position. So my point is, yeah, the 10%.
The 10% is not even in the charter anymore.
Okay.
So that's a, that, that was.
The point is, you said he's the lawyer. He's, they came up with the fact that it's not legal that would happen. What I'm saying is I appreciate the fact that they're doing it the correct way. The point is, you said he's the lawyer, he's, they came up with the fact that it's not legal that would happen. What I'm saying is I appreciate the fact that they're doing it the correct way.
Yes.
So I don't know if that made any sense, but inside of a department or between two departments, you have to come through the council. So I thought that was clear, but maybe I didn't make myself clear.
Can I, can I comment, Council President?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I'm, in a roundabout way, I'm agreeing with what you're saying, I just don't believe the memo that we are talking about had in any way alluded to the fact that money was moving from one department to a second department. It was an interdepartment transaction.
I agree with you 100%.
Okay, but that's not, that is not really what you said earlier. You said it, moving money between two departments.
Right. Do you agree that moving the money within, since you're going to keep going on, do you agree moving the money in the department was deemed to be illegal?
I defer to corporation counsel. He wrote the memo, was it illegal? I don't know what, I don't remember illegal being a word in the memo.
Corporation counsel, can you explain to Mr. Abraham what happened so that we can get this off the agenda here, because these are the things that happened in the previous administration and the previous council, where we get red hearings to talk about something that has nothing to do with anything.
I didn't bring it up, Council President. You brought it up.
So since, I brought up the fact that what, what the administration is doing is lawful and proper.
I don't disagree.
Okay? So since that was lawful and proper, let's talk about the previous administration's illegal moving of money between, in the department. So corporation counsel, can you address that memo that maybe he didn't get a copy of?
I got a copy of it, Council President.
Okay. Well, I'd like to hear the corporation counsel, because we're not going to keep doing this under, under my tenure. We have an administration that is telling us truthfully and transparency that they're moving money and want to request to do it, that they have $1.2 million there. And I think that's very prudent, and I think it's very respectful, but I want to make sure that what we do is legal, not what has been done. We're not doing what's been done no more. It's a new age, we're doing what we're supposed to do. And what we're supposed to do is when you move money out of a budget, you come to the council and ask for it. Okay? You don't say, we always did it this way, and it doesn't matter. That's why we have an investigation going on with the Civil Service Commission, which will have a meeting this Thursday at 8:00, if you'd like to attend it. That's what's going on right now, because you cannot do those things and say they're lawful. And the city ruled, and the city attorney ruled that it was, it was not lawful, and that you can't do it. So when you do something, so when you want to talk about the law, since we're going to belabor this, when you do something that is against the charter, that is a misdemeanor, which is a criminal action, which is a law. So I want to make sure we get that clear, because I'm not going to keep going through this over and over again.
Because my recollection of the memo that it was a violation of an ordinance, not the charter, and that the ordinance actually referred to the old charter that isn't even in place anymore.
Okay.
So the ordinance is outdated, so if we really want to talk about having an outdated ordinance that corporation counsel never updated and never brought forward, we can go all the way back to why was that ordinance even on the books when it referred to a charter that's not even in place anymore.
Okay. If that's your opinion, then I wish you should have brought that over when the, when the memo was sent out about three weeks ago.
I was, I was clear about it.
Okay.
We can ask corporation counsel, was it, did you use the word illegal in the memo?
Well, you're saying he, first of all, you said he's referenced an old charter, so if that's the case, that's for another meeting?
The ordinance references the old charter.
Right, right. So we'll go ahead and have him address that. So Mr. Romer, can you address that issue to the council and send it after the, when you get chance after the meeting, because he's indicating, you heard what he said before we go further, Mr. Parris, do you have anything to answer?
Council President, with all due respect to the council.
Yes.
The items that we're talking about now is back from December and not germane to what we're talking about tonight, so can I ask for the question?
Call for the question, yeah.
I always like to hear the corporation counsel's response. You asked him a question.
I didn't ask him a question. I, I, no, I didn't. I directed him to create a memo to indicate what the issue is.
Before this earlier, you said to respond to me what the memo said. I'd like to hear the response.
Mr. Romer, Councilman Parris has called for the question. What's the process when he calls for the question? He did an offer and a support, correct?
I was going to say, yeah, all second.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, we have a call for the question by Councilman Parris.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Hamud. Now, I believe we have to do a roll call vote, is that correct, Mr. Romer?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Does everybody understand, council, that you vote yes, that you're done discussing this, so we can go forward? If you vote yes?
And I'd like, I'd like everybody to know that all I'm asking for is a response from corporation counsel as our legal advisor.
Mr. Clerk, can you call for the roll?
Yes. Council, Councilmember Parris?
Yes.
Councilmember Al-Sawafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Serini?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
No.
We have four yays, three nos.
Okay, thank you. The question is called.
Does it require four or five?
Unanimous roll, it's a four.
It's not unanimous.
Four.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about the item is completed. Mr. Romer?
Four.
Yeah, it's a majority, I'm talking about unanimous since this is over. So the call for the question has been voted, the clerk has read the court, read it into the record, it's four to three. Unanimous roll will be attached for this item, next item.
No, I, roll call vote on this item, sir.
And I wasn't finished either.
Okay, we can have a roll call vote.
The discussion was not over, but you ended it.
You can't go back to the discussion, that's what the call for the question is.
You're right, but we can ask for a roll call vote.
Yes, you can. So, Mr. Clerk, we're going to have a roll call vote on this item number 15.
All right. Councilmember Al-Sawafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember President Serini?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
No.
Councilmember Parris?
Yes.
Five yays, the resolution passes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 16, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Hamud, authorizing the return of former Mayor Oral Hubbard's portrait from Hubbard Manor West to the Hubbard family and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached, taken from the table. The portrait of the former Mayor Oral Hubbard was displayed in the lobby of the Hubbard Manor West since the opening of the building as a tribute to the former mayor. Recently, the family of the former mayor has requested the portrait to be returned to them. The item was tabled at the last two committee of the whole readings as council requested for more information as to the ownership and the city's obligation as we received a memo from corporation counsel. The portrait of the city, the portrait is city property, and with nominal monetary value, the city may gift it to, to the family of the former Mayor Hubbard. The city's authority is supported by Section 2-574 of the City Code of Ordinances, which provides that the city, through procurement officer, may scrap surplus items when the cost of handling exceeds the proceeds. Similarly, the cost of selling an item that exceeds the estimated proceeds, then the city may choose to give that item away rather than attempt to obtain fair value for, valid value for consideration for it. Any questions or concerns? I know Councilwoman Burns has a question.
Thank you, Council President. So one of the points of discussion, I would say, around this item has really revolved around a lack of a paper trail dating back to, I don't know when this portrait came about, maybe in the 70s, I want to say, it's been several decades. But either way, no real paper trail existed around kind of the creation, ownership, and so on. So I appreciate Mr. Romer, corporation counsel, doing his homework and updating council with a memo on that process. And I was in touch via email earlier today with corporation counsel around what we can do to create a paper trail at this point. Of course, we can't go back in time and undo what has been done, or lack thereof, I suppose in this case, but if Councilman Hamud, who supported the item, and my colleagues are okay with this, I would like to include a note in this resolution, just requiring a signed and dated receipt of transfer, as I would call it, and corporation counsel, please feel free to add more legal or technical language there, but I would just like to see, again, some paper trail, given where we are now, for whichever member of the family comes to retrieve this portrait, so that we have some documentation as to who picked it up, when, and we just have that, that paper trail from this point on. So, Mr. Romer, is there anything, any guidance you would add to this end?
No, I would say that's well said. I would note, for the clerk, though, item 16 says return. Through our research, it was deemed that it's the city property, so the proper wording, in my opinion, would be gifting, not returning. So if we could just make that note.
Okay, and this was offered by Councilwoman Burns and Councilman Hamud. Do you both, I'm assuming you have no issue with, we're going to change it to gifted, and the resolve clause, the actionable clause should indicate that we will receive a written receipt, received by any person deemed to, to receive it for the family of the Hubbard family. Is that correct, Mr. Romer?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, do you have those changes? And Mr. Hoad, are you good with those?
Yeah, actually, I think I brought up the gifted thing at the cow.
Oh, then they missed it, okay, good.
Yeah.
But also, we wanted to add to the resolve clause, Councilwoman Burns's request that they have a, have a paper trail of a receipt of the product.
Yep, no problem.
Counsel, anything else?
Yes. Just in the interest of full transparency, I shared this, I believe, at a previous committee of the whole where the item was discussed. This is an item or a process that I worked on in the previous calendar year, so 2021, had several residents from Hubbard Manor West reach out to me expressing concern around the portrait, so I worked with those folks and some folks in the previous administration to see that this portrait was removed. You know, I think some folks felt that it was just incredibly hurtful and harmful, which I can completely understand, and I think it's very important for this item to be gifted to the family, and I will be happy to see them take it. I think that in its absence, the space will be far more welcoming and inclusive for all who live there and those who visit as well, so I'm happy to see this move forward.
Any other comments by colleagues? Mr. Clerk, do you have the correct information?
Yes, I do.
Okay, anything from the audience? Okay, unanimous roll will be attached. Let's hear an objection. Next item, please.
Item 17, resolution by councilmembers Al-Sawafi and Parris, granting permission to the Dearborn Allied War Veterans Council to conduct its 96th Annual Memorial Day Parade and Remembrance Ceremony on Monday, May 30, 2022, from 7:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., subject to certain stipulations.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached, taken from the table. And the return of the Dearborn Memorial Day Parade, which is entering in its 96th year and is the longest-running event on Memorial Day in the state. The event will take place Monday, May 30, 2022. This event will, will consist of a parade and a memorial ceremony at Henry Ford Centennial Veterans Park and War Memorial following the parade. New this year, the Students Veterans Association from the University of Michigan Dearborn is requesting permission to host a 5K rung along the parade route, beginning at 8:00 a.m. and ending at 9:30 before the procession, so they'll be completed before we begin our event. And the city will also be exploring options for Veterans Resource Fair that will be hosted at the Henry Ford Community, I'm sorry, Henry Ford Centennial Library Parking Lot and after the remembrance ceremony. The fair will include representatives of veterans service organizations, the Michigan Secretary of State Mobile Clinic, and the Dearborn Vet Center as well. This year, we will also work with the CDTV to cross-post the event live with media and news partners similar to the 2022 inauguration as well. The Memorial Day Parade has a budget of $35,104, which has already been earmarked for the event. We are glad to hear that this parade is, and the beloved community tradition is back, and we look forward to continuing to support our veterans and those who played the ultimate sacrifice with their lives to our country. Any questions or concerns from my colleagues? Councilman Al-Sawafi?
First of all, I just want to say, full disclosure, I'm a member of the Dearborn Allied War Veterans Council, I'm also on the committee that helps plan the Memorial Day Parade every year, and I'm happy to see these events really come back to our city in a safe manner. This is exciting, there's going to be that 5K that you mentioned earlier, I'm going to attempt the 5K.
You're going to run it?
Emphasis on attempt, but I'll be there to run it for sure. And I know we have Masad here with us, who's helping plan this, the parade. So if you want to step forward, tell us a little bit about the parade and what the plans are.
Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you just fine.
Okay. So I am sure.
State your name, please, for the.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. My name is Fatuma Masad, I'm the Veterans Liaison for the City of Dearborn, and also, full disclosure, a member of the Dearborn Allied War Veterans Council. So for those that, that don't already know, this is the first time in almost seven decades that my position has been filled by a veteran, so I'm really excited to be here, not just as a city employee to support this event, but also as a member of the veteran community. Our theme for this year that we have, as Councilmember Al-Sawafi already knows that we voted on, is Welcome Home, an end to a 20-year war, to commemorate the end of our 20-year campaign in Iraq and Afghanistan. So it's a little bit twofold. You guys probably know, a lot of our veteran organizations are filled with Vietnam-era vets and older that did not receive that kind of welcome home from the communities and the nation that they served, and never really got an opportunity to honor those that made the ultimate sacrifice, you know, while serving our country. So, one, to capitalize on the moment, not, not capitalize, but, you know, recognize the moment that many of our school-aged children that participate in the parade, whether it's through school organizations or the marching band, this is the first time in their lifetime that they've known a nation at peace, and then to also recognize the many veterans that make up our veteran organizations. Our grand marshal for this year is a Dearborn native, proud Dearborn High graduate, General Martin, many of you, many, many of you might have already met him, he's grand marshaled for us before, and we're really excited to welcome him back. And then the 5K, the Student Veterans of America, they're hoping to use it as an opportunity to fundraise, to create comfort, comfort kits for homeless veterans in the Dearborn metro area. And so when they brought this event to me, I know that a lot of money goes into planning these kinds of events, so if we are already making the request to shut down Michigan Avenue, we already have our police and fire out there, we're already spending the money on porta-potties like we do in any parade season, it made a lot of sense to me, and I think to the parade planning committee as well, to allow them to co-op that space and not spend extra money that could otherwise go to create those comfort items. So that's, that's where that addition come from, comes from. As far as the fair that you mentioned, Council President Serini?
Yes.
My idea, again, and this is me as a veteran, and not just as a city employee, if we're already going to be asking a lot of our local veterans to gather in one place, it made sense to me that we also provide them with something for their service to our country, and we do that by, by centralizing resource. It goes into the idea of Mayor Hamud announced the, the formation of a Veterans Resource Center to centralize veteran-related resources, whether it's access to veteran service organizations, to the Vet Center, which is a community-based counseling and rehabilitation center through the VA. We've got one of eight locations here in the city of Dearborn, so we're very lucky to have them. Again, bringing, bringing those services to where the veterans are already gathering just made a lot of sense to me.
It does, it really does. I hope it's successful on that aspect. I know it's been a while, and hopefully the situation will be better, because it's, it's always been a joy. I've always made sure that I did not schedule an out-of-town event to make sure I'm here for this parade. It's, as you indicated, I don't know if we're going to have a flyover, because we always have one of the best flyovers, so.
So that, that was something that was brought up during the first parade planning committee, and I look forward to following up with the gentleman that's in charge of organizing those flyovers at our meeting next week, and hopefully we'll have some positive news to share. But we are, they are exploring both the historical flyover and the active-duty flyover as well. We typically have, we typically have both.
Yeah, I think we've had a couple different then, over the years, they're excellent.
Yep.
It's a great, it's a great event, and the people are, they line the streets ready to, to celebrate their, or memorialize.
the oldest continuously running in the state of Michigan, and one of the largest in the entire country on Memorial Day. So it's definitely a tradition that we're very happy and honored to have, and glad to bring it back for our residents.
Thank you, Massad. Appreciate all your work. Any other questions by, comments from my colleagues?
If I may, Council President?
Yes, Mayor.
I didn't see. I just want to recognize Fatuma. You know, you asked, you hope that this event will be successful. I can only, let me just say that in the, you know, the four or five short weeks I've been at the city, anything Fatuma touches is successful. I've known this from her time prior to coming into the administration. So really want to recognize her for all her efforts and all she does in the city. Not only just, she does things far outside her scope as veteran liaison. So just want to thank her and recognize her.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that.
Appreciate that, absolutely.
And for the record, I don't think that there's anything outside of the scope of a veterans liaison. It's tied into that whole life of public service that we all, we all sign up for.
That's a good one. Did you take one? All right. Councilwoman Herrick?
I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Massad and to the mayor and his administration for the emphasis that they're placing on making positive new changes to what takes place here in Dearborn on Memorial Day and throughout the year to support our veterans. And on Memorial Day in particular, those who gave the ultimate sacrifice in serving our country. We know that it's a solemn day, and that we've had some traditions in our parade that acknowledge that. But you're going above and beyond to bring veterans together and to inform the public of how important this is that we support our veterans. So again, thank you to you and to the administration for making a really great parade and day even better here in Dearborn.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Herrick. I think, and I can't speak for all veterans, but one of the things that grinds my gears is thank you for your service. I think it's really, really easy to slap that Hallmark-approved saying on just about anything, or even to take time on a federally-recognized day to recognize veterans. I think going the extra mile and creating a more cohesive community for them to be a part of, and then asking ourselves, what does it really mean to honor their sacrifice, those that were recognizing a Memorial Day? The best way that we do that is by making sure that we're taking care of the brothers and sisters that they laid their life down for, but then also for the rest of us to take on the mantle of public service. The responsibility of public service should not be on one percent of the population. And I appreciate that Mayor Hamud and his administration really understands that and understands that the responsibility is on all of us to serve.
Thank you. That's well said. Thank you. Any other comments by my colleagues? Questions from our audience? Okay, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Under new business, item eighteen, resolution by councilmember Herrick, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of William Robert Schneider.
William Robert Schneider, known as Bob to his friends and family, was born in Crafton, Pennsylvania, on August twenty-first, nineteen forty-four, and passed away on January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, at the age of seventy-seven. He has survived by the love of his life for the past fifty-five years, his wife Anne Elaine, and their children, William Robert, Rob, Jr., the late Michael Brendan, Kevin Blaine, and Aaron Martinez-Gilliard. Bob was the devoted papa to Benjamin Patrick, Molly Claire, Callisto, Lauren McKenzie, and Riley Grace. Bob also leaves behind his dear siblings, Mary Jo, Christopher William, and William Bernard, along with many adoring nieces and nephews. From an early age, Bob loved automobiles, and a school guidance counselor encouraged him to transition that passion into a high school teaching certificate. While working midnights, uploading shipping freight, and refurbishing cars to pay his tuition, Bob managed to carry twenty-one credits per semester and graduated college within three years. Upon graduation, Bob drove to Buffalo, New York to persuade Elaine Reagan to drop everything and marry him. That was the beginning of their fifty-year, five-year-long love story. Bob and Elaine moved to Michigan, where he accepted his first teaching position. He enjoyed teaching immensely and once said he would have retired from the classroom if he had not accepted a position with the school administration. In nineteen seventy-nine, Bob made a life-changing decision to quit his job, start up a new business venture. Bob's company, EDSI, morphed from its humble beginnings as a single steel desk in the basement of his residence into a national workforce development, talent and training company, which employs nearly one thousand people in more than eighty locations. Those who knew Bob say he had a warm sense of humor with an easy laugh and spoke frequently and very lovingly of his wife, children, and grandchildren and their families. A longtime resident of Dearborn, Bob took an active interest in the local community. Bob's daughter Erin noted that it was important for him to raise his family in a community like Dearborn, where they could take walks, ride bikes, know their neighbors, and help them out when needed. When his children were young, Bob served as PTA president and also was the lead in, a lead in the Neighborhood Association for decades. At the time of his passing, Bob was currently serving as a commissioner on Dearborn's Civil Service Commission and had previously served as a member on the Board of Trustees for the Retirement System, Chapter Twenty-two and Twenty-three. He took these roles very seriously and served his terms with honesty, integrity, and clear-sighted leadership. Those who served on the Civil Service Commission with Bob said he brought a gentleness and thoughtfulness to the commission. He took his work as a commissioner seriously and didn't shy away from making difficult decisions, but he would listen to the employees' point of view and ask questions in a manner that reflected his respect for them and their work. He will be missed as a commissioner and as a friend of the city. Bob was a staunch fan of the Pittsburgh Steelers and proudly displayed the team flag on games days. Above all, Bob was a devoted husband, father, and family man. He will be forever remembered for his broad smile, laughter, his endless abundance of energy, work ethic, and most of all, how he treated people no matter who they were, where they came from, or by what designations they held. He treated everyone equally with genuine kindness and respect. Bob Schneider's life left an indelible mark on the hearts of his family, friends, colleagues, and countless others who were fortunate to have known him. To all, we offer our most sincere condolences.
Unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item number nineteen, resolution by councilmember Paris, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Donald Richard Strand.
Donald R. Strand was born in nineteen fifty and peacefully passed away on January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, at the age of seventy-two. He has survived by the love of his life for the past forty-four years, Linda Michaels, and their children, John and Jennifer. Donald also left behind his beloved siblings, Dorothy, Catherine, and Richard, and caring grandkids, Philip, Emma, Jack, Logan, as well as many cousins, nieces, and nephews. Donald is joined by his mother Doris and father John R. Strand, and by his brother, John R. Strand, Jr. Even though Don resided in Canton, he was a familiar face to many in Dearborn. He first began his career at the local office of the Secretary of State, and soon after landed a role Deputy City Clerk for the City of Dearborn. Don truly enjoyed his position and was proud of the work he performed as Deputy City Clerk for over twenty-five years. In addition to working for the city, he was also a presenter at the Henry Ford. He was a fan of history and frequently found historical anecdotes to add to his narrations at the Henry Ford to make his presentations come to life. Any spare time Don had, he would enjoy it with his children and grandchildren, whom he loved dearly. He had a passion to help the environment, and he was known for his skill as a modern-day eco-vegetable farmer and a farm-to-table recipes for his friends and family. Don was a wonderful husband, father, grandfather, and friend to many. We are deeply saddened to hear of his passing. I will make mention, too, that Don was a City of Dearborn employee for a period of time at the Police Department, where he had a couple civilian departments. He was an immaculate dresser, an avid golfer, a gentleman, real sharp dresser. And he's going to be missed by those that had the pleasure of knowing him. To all, we offer our deepest condolences.
Thank you, Councilman. Unanimous rule will be attached. Next item.
Item twenty, resolution in need of offer and support, proclaiming February two thousand and twenty-two Black History Month and encouraging the residents of Dearborn to avail themselves to the opportunity to learn about the rich and ever-evolving history of Black Americans and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just and prosperous for all.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Unanimous rule will be attached, taken from the table. And this item was brought forward by Council President Protemp Burns as a means to recognize the February twenty, nationally-recognized February two thousand and twenty-two as Black History Month in Dearborn. And we would need an offer on this, offered by Councilwoman Burns and supported by Councilwoman Herrick. I'd like to turn it over to Councilwoman Burns.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilwoman Herrick, for your support of this item. So I'd like to read our Black History Month, two thousand and twenty-two, resolution. So Black History Month honors the history and ongoing achievements of Black Americans and provides an opportunity to reflect on the centuries of struggle that have brought us to this time of reckoning, redemption, and hope. The City of Dearborn honors the innumerable contributions of Black Americans while reflecting on the systemic barriers Black Americans have faced and still face to this day. It is with recognition of a challenging past and many wrongs to learn from that this city honors the deep significance of Black History Month. Reflecting on the burdens of racial prejudice and stereotypes can open the door to innovative ideas and provide insight into building an environment right here in Dearborn that supports our continued efforts to strive toward racial equity and to be a place of freedom, opportunity, and inclusiveness for everyone. Therefore, be it resolved that the city, or the Dearborn City Council, rather, proclaims February two thousand and twenty-two Black History Month and encourages the residents of Dearborn to avail themselves of the opportunity to learn about the rich and ever-evolving history of Black Americans and to continue our efforts to create a world that is more just and prosperous for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burns. Any other comments from my colleagues? Councilman Al-Sawafi?
Yeah, I just want to thank my colleagues for recognizing Black History Month. And I would like to join you in honoring the incredible contributions the Black community has made to U.S. history from civil rights leaders to politicians, economic leaders, and artists. And it's not just February. Black history is made year-long, and it's something that we can celebrate every day.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. Here in Dearborn, there are a number of opportunities to delve into the rich history of African-American contributions here, in our city as well as across the country. Of course, the Dearborn Public Library is a wealth of information, and they have a series of programs this month honoring those who have made Black contributions here in the United States. I didn't know if Mary Ann Bartels wanted to come and talk a little bit about what the library is doing for adults and children during Black History Month. And I also wanted to acknowledge, we all know, right here in our own backyard is Greenfield Village and Henry Ford Museum, and they have amazing exhibits honoring the contributions of African-Americans here in the United States over time.
Councilwoman Mary Ann Bartels, Library Director. I checked with the staff, actually, this morning, and we have some things going on in children's. We have displays and books about Black history. We have prepared bookmarks for distribution for selected readings about biographies and then nonfiction books about Black history. We are also showing a film, I can't remember the date. It's called Hurricane, and I believe Denzel Washington is in the movie, and that is sometime in, I think, mid-February.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bartels. Anything else, Councilwoman?
And then also, Dearborn Historical Museum, I don't know if, are there any special exhibits for Black History Month at the Dearborn Historical Museum? Director Jack Tate is here with us, and he's stepping up to the podium.
Jack Tate, curator of Dearborn Historical Museum, Council President, members of the council, Mayor. Know, everything we have is going to be online this year. We're in the midst of re-establishing the Commodores Quarters to reflect more Dearborn history than just the Civil War. So that building is pretty well torn up right now. I think a few weeks ago, you accepted ten thousand dollars in a federal grant that's going towards that.
That's correct.
And so we're not putting anything on this year, but every Friday this month, there will be a web, a program on our website and on Facebook on Black history. And you can check that out at our website, and I think you're going to find it very interesting. We have three students from University of Michigan that are putting these together along with our museum assistant, Chris. And the first one, I thought, was very good, and we have another one coming up on the eleventh. I think I gave all of you a copy, so you know what they are. And I also take the opportunity to mention that we have Valentine's Day coming up, and we have something going there at the Ross House. And former Police Sergeant Karen Wanduski, a fantastic storyteller on the events of Dearborn history, is going to be putting on a program on Friday, the eleventh, at six P.M. There will be some refreshments, and we are charging a fee for this one. That's eleven bucks. Again, you can go to our website and get more information on it, but Karen putting it on, it will be a lot of fun. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tate.
Thank you, Jeff.
Anything else on this item from my colleagues? Anything from members of the public? Okay, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
I believe that there is a walk-on item from the administration.
Yes.
Privy to it, but I understand that there is one.
Okay. I believe that's coming from the mayor's office and Corporation Council?
Yes.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The walk-on items are the DDA appointments for Chief of Staff and Chief Operating Officer, kind of at-large appointments for the East and West DDAs.
Okay, for both East and West?
Correct.
Okay, I missed that.
Additionally, I'll just add that I made a Facebook post today, City of Dearborn government did as well, of various other board appointment positions that are also open. We also shared that with council.
Yes, we received it in the council.
And there's a new email address that's been established for folks to submit their resume and application if they have interest in serving on any of the boards or appointments, because there are still some openings on the DDAs as well as some other board and commissions.
Okay, I appreciate it. Mr. Romer? Is that sufficient enough, or do we need to read it into the clerk? You need the names?
No, so you're going to have to take each appointment individually?
Individually, yeah.
Yeah, because they require confirmation.
Correct, yeah.
So I can give, I can walk over the four to George if you'd like, just to make it easier for him?
Yeah, we just want to make sure we read it and make sure that we have an opportunity for the colleagues to. And I believe that the essence of this walk-on is that this appointments are required before the next council meeting to make sure that you have the-
Before the next DDA meeting, correct.
The DDA meeting is going to come before our next regularly-scheduled council meeting, because as, I would prefer that it be brought on the regular time, but because of the essence of timing, that the next meeting will, for the boards, will happen before our council meeting. So as they're read in, we're going to need an offer and support. So, Mr. Clerk, would you call this item number?
I'll call it under new business item, the first one, item twenty-one. There'll be twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four.
Okay.
So item twenty-one is to authorize Amanda Bright McLanahan to the East Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors for a term ending January first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay. Do we have an offer and support on that? Amanda is our COO of the city right now. Offered by Councilwoman Herrick?
I'll support.
Supported by Councilman Hamud?
Council President.
Yeah, Councilman Harris?
May I ask then, too, were we doing for both at one time?
Yeah, that's, that's why I wanted to make clarified. We're doing, that resolution is for which, for Amanda's, for east or west?
We're doing Amanda for east, then we'll do Amanda for west.
We're doing four separate, so this is for, yeah. So Ms. Ma, how do you pronounce it? McLanahan?
McLanahan.
McLanahan. So we have an offer by Councilman Hamud, right?
Yeah.
And a support by-
Oh, sorry, no.
Herrick and Hamud.
Herrick and Hamud, got it. So you have it, Herrick and Hamud. Okay. Any questions by my colleagues?
Yeah, just one comment.
Yeah, Councilman Hamud?
I just want people to know, I'm very excited to have Mr. McLanahan on, hopefully, both of these boards. For everybody who doesn't know, Mr. McLanahan comes from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and in my conversations with her and the times that she's come before council, I'm extremely excited to have her on board with this administration. She brings a very fresh and very welcome view when it comes to economic development in the city. I can already tell you, just in my personal opinion, based on the kind of ideas she has for economic development and promotion of our downtown, especially our downtown districts, as well as even other underdeveloped areas in the city, I think she's going to provide some phenomenal insights on all of these boards, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamud. Okay, so you have Herrick and Hamud, correct?
Correct.
Okay, unanimous rule will be attached, unless I hear an objection? Okay, unanimous rule will be attached.
Next item, twenty-two, to appoint Amanda Bright McLanahan to the West Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors, and with a term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay. We need an offer and support on this item?
I'll offer.
Offered by Councilman Al-Sawafi, supported by Councilwoman Herrick. Again, these items are being brought forward as a walk-on because of the time of the meeting being scheduled. Our meeting does not, will not be scheduled in time for this, so. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this? Okay, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item.
Item twenty-three, resolution to appoint Zainab Hussain to the East Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors with a term ending January first, two thousand and twenty-six.
I'll offer.
Support.
Offered by Councilman Paris, supported by Councilwoman Burns. Any questions or concerns or any objections for unanimous rule? Okay, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item.
Item number twenty-four, resolution to appoint Zainab Hussain to the West Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors for a term ending January first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay, again, we need an offer and support, offered by Councilwoman Herrick, supported by Councilwoman Paris. Guess any comments or questions on this? Okay, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item.
So nothing further from the clerk's office. I have an update on election stuff when you get a moment for that.
Yeah, we'll get that right after, Mr. Clerk. Let's see, do we have anything from the mayor?
So is this other items, or is this like any updates?
If you're done with the items, Mayor, then yeah, you can proceed with your updates, because then it's going to go to the council next.
Awesome. Okay, so no more items. I'll provide just a few updates. I have three. One, I know at the cow, I recognize the snow emergency response of our DPW and facility staff. So just want to do so at the council meeting, for all those viewing. You know, our DPW and facility staff worked round the clock over a period of three days. It's a fairly long snow emergency, just given how it fell down. Really just want to give them a shout-out under the leadership of our director, Tim Hawkins, and what they've been able to do. And, you know, I went on to one of the plowchucks with Brian, who's been here for twenty-three years, and in his twenty-three years, he never saw as many cars off of the neighborhood streets. So thank you to all the residents as well that worked with us. That's the first update. The second is, in coordination with our police chief, Isa Shaheen, we have established a full-time traffic safety unit, and this is based on the concerns that we've heard from residents about the speeding and reckless driving in our neighborhoods. And so just, you know, further demonstrating that we're listening to our residents, their concerns, and really targeting those issues that are impacting our immediate public health. We have this large public health lens on everything we're doing as an administration. So just want to give credit to our police chief in working with me on this matter, as well as to those officers that are out there enforcing the moving violations, you know, speeding, reckless driving, rolling the stop signs, red lights, things of that nature. Then the third update, at the request, and I brought it up at the end of the cow last time. time, to provide an update regarding Tent Village. As we know, a lot of residents reached out about this matter, so just to give an update, we know that the wood for the tents that were used were purchased actually in the '70s and the '80s. The last time that the green canvas was purchased was in around 1996, and so the wood is about 50-some years old, the canvas, the green portion of the tent is about 25 years plus old. And making our visit over to Camp Dearborn two weeks ago now, I believe, and at the recommendation of the camp managers posed as a great safety and hazard to those that were renting these tents, and to my understanding as well, that they had given a recommendation to the previous administration over the last two or three years, each year, that they think that an incident could happen. Anecdotally speaking, myself and the community relations director, Alia Phillips, did also contact every single Dearborn resident that had a reservation, their information we had. So we called each one of them and just spoke with them, or left them a voicemail, or provided them an ability to reach back out, informing them, we know this is an inconvenience. We tried giving as much lead time. Most of these reservations were obviously for the summer, so we gave about six or seven months of lead time. Plus, we gave early access to making reservations at some of our other amenities, whether it be the rustic cabins or, and things of that nature. Plus, we provided them a full compensation for season pass over at Camp Dearborn. It is scheduled, we're working with, hopefully having these taken down internally with our DPW and facility staff. We're working on those numbers right now in a timeline, hopefully slated for this month. But what we're trying to do to further accommodate is if we're able to clear up these sites, we might be able to offer, we're trying to forget the number, maybe 30 sites or so, where we can allow folks to bring in their own tents for this season. The plans in the longer term, we're trying to invest more into Camp Dearborn. We're going to update all the electric at these sites, which would allow, you know, RV and campsite hookups, also allow individuals to put up their own tents and explore other options. So this is in no way trying to take away from Camp Dearborn. What we're trying to do is make sure that it's a safe place for all who visit Camp Dearborn, Dearborn residents and non-Dearborn residents alike, but want to make sure that our accommodations are up to par and that the city is not putting itself in a vulnerable position. So just wanted to provide that update as well. Those are the three updates that I had.
All right, thank you, mayor. And then, too, we also, I had seen some social media posts with our police chief with the shovel and a whole bunch of younger gentlemen. What was going on there? I see them at City of Dearborn.
Thank you for that. Forgive me. We had our police chief, as well as our police and fire interns, go out. We know that the senior shoveling service is largely provided through the Community Services Program through the courts.
Through the courts, yeah.
Obviously, that's not active, and so we still have the list of seniors and residents in need. And so our police chief went out with our police and fire interns to help shovel, along with some volunteer operations by Rabi Hamud, Yisar County, Wayne County Executive, and several other members, and the Chief of Staff for Wayne County Executive, who went out and helped shovel many residential homes, so God bless them. And I was saying, I think the police chief was amongst the young ones, so he kept up.
It's a great service, and I appreciate that, mayor, because with the court, I know that was mainly the court's, I'm sorry. Mainly the court was, the work program was taking care of that, and there's many senior citizens that cannot afford to do it, and some of the snow was very, very heavy. So I do appreciate that, and I wanted to make sure he mentioned it. We're going to go back to the clerk, and then we'll get to our council. Clerk, you did have some comments you'd like to make?
Yeah, just one quick comment. You know, we have an election coming up three weeks from today to fill our state rep vacancy spot, so we have mailed out about 6,000 AV ballots, and to date, we have about 1,000 that have been returned. So that's where we're sitting right now, but folks can come to the clerk's office between 8:00 and 5:00, Monday through Friday, to vote absentee if they prefer to do it that way instead of voting at the polls on Tuesday, March 1st.
And, Mr. Clerk, how about a drop box? Do we have some of those?
We have a drop box in our parking lot.
Okay. Just one, the one right outside?
Yep.
Okay.
If I may ask a question to the clerk?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Is it possible to put up signs in that, when you first enter a city building, to do city, sorry, anything with the city, to put up signs to say, "Vote now while you're waiting"? So people who are walking in to do city business are just reminded to vote while they're there?
Yep, yep.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, it was always very eye-opening for me to see how many people still like to come in.
Correct.
And pay, you know, at the window, so it's just the way that some people like to do, even though we have many, many options on how to pay in kiosses and so on and so forth. Some people just prefer that method, and I think that's a great idea. So, anything else? Clerk, you have anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, anything from my colleagues? Okay, we got a few here, so we'll start down here. Councilman Harris?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Council President. I do have a couple of things, but I'd like to go in order here. If I could go back and to the subject that the mayor talked about, the traffic safety, about forming a traffic safety unit. I just want to stress, and so people hear this, that I think we all know, being on the campaign trail, that traffic safety is probably the number-one most often stated concern of all residents within this city. I can tell you, just from my background on the police department and being on the traffic commission that was chair, I take this really personally. This effort that we're trying to go out there and do something about traffic safety, and that does not mean going out and writing all the tickets we can for whatever we can at any time we can. You know, there's got to be a basis for it, there's got to be a database, some sort of reason for locations, substantiated citizen complaints. But I will bring back, although I do appreciate what Chief Shaheen is doing and the mayor is doing, this traffic safety team is not new. It started first week of June. The thing about that, though, the City of Dearborn residents didn't hear anything about it. And if you can hear by the tone of my voice, yes, I'm angry. And the reason being, this is not the current administration, this is not the current police chief, and I'm not going against what the prior administration was doing, but we have to let the residents know what's going on in our community with traffic safety. So I'm expecting, I would hope to hear, in the future, that there are periodic reports by the police department, either through the mayor or on their website, about information, what we're doing, why we're doing it, where we're doing it, and for how long, and what are the results. There's got to be some sort of metrics, there has to be some sort of tabulation, what are we doing, how are we doing it? So again, I do appreciate the chief, and I do appreciate the mayor for doing this, but I've heard this before. We've had traffic safety initiative, we've had grants before that we go out for a week or two, go ahead and write some tickets with the state police, or Wayne County Sheriff, or do this on our own, or in cooperation with other police departments. I'm expecting more, and I'm going to hold people accountable, so I do appreciate them. Thank you.
If I may follow up, thank you so much for your comments, Councilman Paris. What I'll add is, I think it was established before, we've shifted our deployment strategies, we actually have more officers dedicated. The second thing I'll add is, and we haven't posted it yet, we're working on that press release, and it might have gone out, or it might be going out this week. We actually launched a new updated dashboard for the police department, and so it'll be real-time updates fairly quickly, varying citations, citations by race, demographic, age demographic. And so the dashboard will be updated to provide citations, reasons people are being pulled over, as well as arrests. So we're excited for that. It's modernized, it's an improvement based on what we currently, what we had previously, and hopefully we'll continue to try to improve that as well, to make sure that the data is available for whenever the public wants it, and we'll do our best to continually communicate with these updates as well.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And just a thing on that, mayor, just to piggyback on what Councilman Paris had indicated. There was a time where we had, you know, the state police, blue lights, there were Christmas, during Christmas and New Year's tickets. And I hope that's not the case. We want to keep it with our officer. I know that deployment has changed, as I indicated last time, residents had seen police presence in the neighborhoods significantly more, so I appreciate it, but Councilman Paris is dead on, but, and I hope that the administration looks for, looks to that aspect. We don't need to bring in outside agencies on a lot of these. They were, they were brought in, and a lot of tickets were written, there was a lot of issues with it at Christmas time. It was, it was a really bad scenario, those that recall. So hopefully, I'm sure, I'm sure you'll have a different plan, but we do appreciate the update, and I know that the communications is being changed very rapidly, and the websites are being updated as fast as possible. Thanks, and I appreciate it, though. Councilman, who's next had a question? Good? Councilwoman Burns, then Councilman Al Sowafi.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to circle back to the recent snow emergency and echo mayor Hamud's thanks to our awesome DPW team, Mr. Hawkins. I feel like everyone really was all hands on deck in the snow emergency. I know I even wound up calling Glenn Maleko, who's our Dearborn Public Schools Superintendent, had a resident reach out related to an issue of parking at one of the schools, and Mr. Maleko was on it immediately, followed up with me, really took care of it very quickly. So just want to thank everyone, from DPW to the schools, police and fire. I really feel like this was kind of a wraparound approach to service. Even our social media, I felt, was really on top of it this time, which I appreciated. So I think if we can continue to move in that direction and just build off of that momentum, we'll be in even better shape. But very impressed and very happy with what I saw this past week, so congrats and thank you to everybody.
Excellent. Councilman Al Sowafi.
Yeah, I just want to say, I appreciate Councilman Paris and your comments, and reckless speeding and drivers is the number-one priority for me. We point to the chief to solve the solution, but it's really not just the chief. Everybody has a shared responsibility. It's the parents at home, you know, this goes back to our schools. Engineering should be really a joint effort, a three-pronged approach with, which the mayor has touched on, to really solve this issue. The summer is approaching, and we know that during the summer, there's going to be an increased number of speeders in our neighborhoods, so I appreciate all the effort that's going into this. This is a number-one priority for me, so like, like my councilman, you know, I'm going to hold people accountable for it, for sure, and I'm going to be looking for KPIs to see how we're actually solving this issue. And it's going to take more than just giving out tickets. We're going to need some engineering solutions to this as well.
Thank you. Anything else from my colleagues? Councilman Harris?
I do have one more, and I apologize for addressing one more issue, but thank you, mayor, for bringing up some items about an update on Camp Dearborn. What I wanted to say, though, and just to ask you a question, I don't want to put you on the spot for this, but I have to ask, when did we first make a decision about Camp Dearborn, about not going forward with Tent Village?
Thank you for that question. I think the decision was made probably two days before the email first went out, to those who had the reservations, maybe a day before. I mean, I think I was on the job, that was my third week or so in office, so obviously very truncated timeline.
The reason why I'm asking that is, to me, you know, I got a phone call, I, first of all, heard about this from a family member who saw it on social media. I didn't hear anything about it. I had a member of your staff contact me and let me know, and of course, by that time, I had heard. The reason why I'm bringing this up, though, that there is a real attachment to the residents of this city with Camp Dearborn. And whether you frequently visit it or not, when there's any changes in anything of significance like this that happens, it's heartfelt. People hear it. They've made accommodations some 40, 50, 60 years, you know, going out to Camp Dearborn. And what was a little disappointing to me, and although the timeline was only within a few days, you know, we had a council meeting just a few days before the letter came out from the camp manager about what was taking place, and I was a little bit disheartened anyways that the council members were not made aware of this decision before it was made, and then going ahead and publicizing it by our camp manager. I would only suggest in the future that something of significance that is going to have an effect on people, be shared with other leaders of the community, other leaders that are sitting at this table right now, as far as city council. And I know we've talked in some items about prior administration. You go on the master plan for the Recreation and Parks Department right now, and it shows for that plan between 2021 and 2025, that this next year, that there were originally some plans of taking down all the tents, and especially in I and H row, from what I'm believing to have read in the City Recreation Department master plan, there was also some comments about money that, for infrastructure and for some skills to go out to camp and go ahead and make some repairs. The suggestion that I had made, when I got the call from the city, is if there was any way that we can go ahead and at least have half, you know, the canvas and the framing and so on, I know it's in bad shape, but maybe we had enough, and I know you made mention about 30-some, 37 or so, that maybe become available. I would only suggest that, you know, if some sort of an inventory or something could have been done ahead of time, COVID took a big hit on everybody, and it wasn't just the personnel, it was revenues, and, you know, that is revenue. You know, people coming in and making use this summer, and hopefully some of the restrictions are going to be lifted, but I think we owe our residents here just a little bit more foresight, a little bit more knowledge about why we're making decisions and when we're making those decisions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that comment, Councilman Paris. I will 100% take the feedback about communicating with council. I think of working with our chief of staff, we know there was a lapse in communication, and so we apologize, and I think we communicated with each of you individually about, you know, fixing that process moving forward. As it pertains to providing the public more, more time on the notice, you know, the administration was in less than a month, and reservations were six months out. If I had waited prolonged for a few study sessions to make that decision, it would have been closer on reservations. Now, what we did by accommodating, by opening up early reservations for those folks that did have cancellations, we saw a great increase in that first week, on January 31st, people called in, and I'm not sure what the number is, but many folks who did have a canceled reservation were able to pick up a reservation at a different amenity that was offered at Camp Dearborn. To the 30-some sites that I spoke to, it's not about leaving up the wooden, green canvas tents up, it's about the plots. They'll have the plots that they can rent at a discounted rate to bring their own tent. And so that's what we're working on, obviously, depending on timeline, when we're able to get out there. We're hoping that we can get out there this month. We're going to try to accommodate Dearborn residents that had reservations first, and then move to the non-Dearborn residents that had reservations afterwards, and then open it up more broadly if there are any additional openings. So we're doing our best in those communications.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Harris. Anything else? Get Councilman Al Sowafi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You talked about some of the homework that you did leading up to the decision to take down the tents. You talked about, a little bit about the future state, how you see it. Can you talk a little bit about, about that? What do you plan on bringing instead of the tents or in replacement of the tents?
Yeah, thank you for that question. You know, to Councilman Paris's remarks, Camp Dearborn holds sentimental value to every Dearborn resident, and every Dearborn resident has moved on to a different community. I'm someone who grew up at Camp Dearborn. I think the reality is, the investments that Camp Dearborn needs have not been made for budgetary reasons. You know, I'm not saying that people neglected to make those investments. What I'm saying is, in a list of priorities, it tended to fall down on that list. What we're trying to do in that specific Tent Village site is update all the electric, so you can have full hookup sites, and that way you can bring in an RV or camper, or bring in your own tent and rent out a plot yourself and put up your own tent. You know, I'm somebody that's gone camping to, you know, for example, West Virginia. I typically go annually for whitewater rafting or rock climbing. You typically rent a plot of grass, and you throw up your own tent and things of that nature. We're trying to see what accommodations. I think we will, you know, try to also solicit, solicit resident feedback and what they would like to see in Tent Village in addition to these full hookup sites, to see, you know, what the interest is from a consumer perspective for self-tenting, bringing your own tent or not, or keeping it just the full hookup sites. So expect those conversations to happen.
That's it. Okay. Yeah. That's okay, another item, go ahead, Mr. Council.
So I received a few complaints from residents from different parts of our city complaining that GFL trucks are leaking hydraulic fluid, or what appears to be hydraulic fluid. So I know that might not be the case. I talked in length with Director Hawkins on this, but I just wanted you to kind of, Director Hawkins, if you can step to the podium, and just tell the residents about our discussion, your findings, and what they can expect.
Good evening, Council President. Council, Tim Hawkins, Director for DPW and Facilities. So every one of these complaints or requests is investigated. What we typically find is that these complaints follow a rain event. People leave the lids up, or they do not close the lids on the garbage can, there's excess water collected in the 96-gallon container. And when it's dumped in the trucks, after multiple cans are emptied, we have an excess we have an excess of water that tends to leak out. All these events, we do send somebody by to check if it is some sort of oil because the second highest thing we find is cooking oil. So we find that people have a family get together, do some cooking, fry a turkey, whatever it may be, take the five gallon, three gallon oil container and drop it into the truck. We walk up, and sure enough, it's oil. But I can smell that it's turkey or fish from 10 feet away. So those are common things, and I do hope that the citizens will refrain from putting oil inside of our cans. But if it is GFL in our contract, that truck becomes, it's immediately taken out of service. We have a record of the route the truck was on. A service crew goes through and lays down a oil absorbent material immediately. And then a company follows up and cleans the contaminated area within 48 hours. That is our contract. We have done it. We have executed it. They've done it without us calling. They've said, hey, we've had a hydraulic failure. It's a line. It's mechanical equipment. There's bound, you know, to have a failure. They alert us. We know it's cleaned up within 48 hours, and we have a record of it. So I do want to tell the public that if they do think there's something out there, call us. We will have it investigated immediately and follow the appropriate actions. And I would also request that they refrain from putting oil inside the cans.
One more thing. These trucks, they use a lot of hydraulic oil to operate, correct?
Correct.
Do they come with an instrument that lets them know if there's?
Correct. Yes. I do apologize. Inside the cab, they do have a warning light. If there is a hydraulic failure of any kind and they lose pressure, the light comes on, and the truck immediately is shut down, taken out of service. Hydraulic pumps don't only work when the instrument is in service. It's pumping continually to operate many of the items on the truck. So if the light comes on, they shut them down. We have a service truck come over. It's corrected that way. We get a full report of that when that does occur.
I mean, this is a concern for me because it's a hazard, obviously, hydraulic oil. We have folks that walk their pets, and they can get on their, on the pet's feet, you know. So you said the process is right now, if there is a hydraulic oil leak, they clean it up? GFL cleans it up?
And, well, no, they put an absorbent material down immediately, and they hire a company that's certified in getting the contaminant from the ground at that point.
Is it in the process that the city of Dearborn is notified of that leak?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hmood, what did they answer that for?
No, well, one we just brought up, which is, if you have a hydraulic failure on a, on a vehicle, typically, you'll, you'll know as an operator pretty quickly, considering your brake lines, your hydro, other hydraulic things like your.
Your gates, your.
Yeah, all kinds of things will fail, so you'll, you'll know pretty quickly. That's one. And then also, would you please describe to residents while you're up here what they're supposed to do with their cooking oil and how they're supposed to dispose of it?
Well, cooking oil is supposed to be returned to its container, and then it has to be disposed of at a waste collection unit, such as an oil delivery facility. Sometimes people have friends that own restaurants. You pour it in their cooking oil bins, but it is not something that can be thrown away or dumped on the ground. It actually has to be disposed of at an oil collection facility.
I believe the city has one, right?
We have had some in the past. We haven't had one with COVID. We used to collect it at Henry Ford Community College. They used to put on Hazardous Waste Day, where you could take all of your oils and your antifreeze and everything.
Like batteries, I think, too?
Batteries, all kinds of things. We have reached out. There were some vouchers that came through Wayne County, but it was a limited number. They were gone within minutes of those vouchers. So we're working with Wayne County. We're working with some of the other communities to try to come up with a recycling day.
Okay, so I think that's something that we definitely want to work on and kind of inform residents on how to safe, dispose of hazardous items more safely. So I appreciate that.
Okay, okay. Councilwoman Burns, just a couple of follow ups.
Just a quick note. I know we were talking about recycling batteries. I just wanted to mention, if anyone is in need of that. I know at the Dearborn Heights South Library off of Van Born, they have like a drop box for battery recycling, just everyday batteries that you can use. It's outside. It's accessible any time of day. So just a quick note on that.
That's a, that's a good, yeah, that's a good option. Councilman Paris?
Director Hawkins, I just wanted to ask, are we still getting reports from GFL? Because I know it's the 844 number that residents are asked to call in case there's any complaints against GFL. But I remember in the very beginning, when we first got the contract, and I think, I think the contract is up this year.
Contract's up, that's what I'm going to say.
It's up June, after June of this, this year, five year contract, $21 million. They've gone through a tough time, as have all trash haulers, you know, with personnel, with equipment and so on. But what I do remember, and I think Councilman Bazey brought it up from recollection, that there was a whole conversation about equipment. And we all know the older red trucks are the older ones, and the yellow are the newer ones. And I believe this council was assured, and the city was assured, that it would be new equipment, but it would take a period of time to revolve them over.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that, and we're going to discuss that because I was going to say, I appreciate the chicken and fish oil, but there's more going on than that. I'm just going to be honest with you. I've seen the condition of these trucks. I've complained about them early in the summer. I think it's a conversation that we're going to have with the study session. As Councilman Paris indicated, you know, it's the largest contract that we have, single contract. And we're going to, there is, there was performance issues in there. There was also a criteria where they had to maintain the trucks to certain specification. I had to call a few times because it didn't look like they've been washed in, in years. That was in the summer. So I think that's a discussion when we go for budgeting because this contract, and according to the mayor, we're going to be involved as a council. This is something that I have a passion for because it's one of the largest. My mom always said, people want the police and fire department, and the garbage picked up. That's, that's what they care about. And the garbage contract has been a concern, as Councilman Paris indicated. And I know it's, it's always, we're, we're chasing after it with bodies and as far as what, what's going on in today's climate. But we will be looking into all those performance aspects to see which we're, we're adhered to and which we're not adhered to. Because there was actually performance issues in there where we had to ask the corporation council to violate them for because they, they didn't perform.
Are we still getting a complaint from GFL?
Yes, we do. And we also have somebody that is handling complaints on our side as well as far as tipped over cans and missed pickups and things along that line. But I will tell you this, to speak to the trucks themselves, right now, I have a street sweeper that is almost, I believe, 10 weeks. I've been waiting on a brake caliper. So to ask for GFL to meet their equipment requirements in 2021, 2022 standards, it's absolutely not going to happen. I have ordered a few trucks to replace some of my 15 yard dump trucks that will not be here for 2023 even. They were requested in 2021. Freightliner is sold out. They do not have the parts to manufacture a new truck. There's nothing I can do. Nothing.
You know, that's very true.
That is going to be one thing that I want to bring forward is that some of those requests in that contract was a four year contract pre-COVID, when parts and equipment were available. We have trucks that GFL has rented, stuck a sticker on to make sure that they hold up our contract. So these are some concerns that we can bring up during the study session. But I do not want you to have a unrealistic expectation of what will be achievable as far as equipment. I am limping equipment along in our DPW until we get parts.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
If I may, just one comment, Council President.
Yes, Mayor.
Under the leadership of Director Hawkins and DPW and Facilities, we know that many a contract come through that department. And so in his, you know, as he's working through his department and looking for efficiencies, we're going to have personnel who are specifically dedicated to ensuring that the contractors are meeting everything that's in the contract, which was not the case previously. We had nobody that had an accountability lens. And so under his leadership, he's come forward with a plan about we can have someone go to a site and ensure that everything that was listed was actually done, that the job was met, or else we go back to that contractor and hold them accountable. And so we're super excited for that change. It's welcomed, and then it's a big thanks to Director Hawkins and his team.
Yeah, we definitely appreciate that, Mayor. That was definitely a concern that was voiced many, many times. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Director. All right, before I go to the public, I just wanted to take a minute to wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day, which is coming up. And we have several birthdays on the council, so I have to make sure I mention them all. Councilman Paris was just yesterday. Happy birthday. Councilwoman Herrick is coming up in a couple of days. Mr. Elswafi is coming up in a couple more days. And myself is coming up in a few more days, too. So as I always say, the best people are born in February.
I agree.
And September.
Okay. So I always like to take time to, well, say happy birthday to all my colleagues and anyone who's enjoying one this month.
You guys all the same sign?
Same sign. All right. If there's anything further from my colleagues, Councilman Elswafi?
Thank you, Council President. Been about two weeks I went on a ride along with the Dearborn Police. And I just kind of want to.
How many hours?
All night, about 12 hours. So a night shift, you know.
They're raising the bar.
It was a, it was a pretty busy night, and, you know, I was shocked what our police go through. You know, as a man that went through a war zone for two years, I was still taken aback by, you know, what I seen that night. You know, went from a call for a mental health call to a report of stolen vehicle to water main break. We just asked our police to do so much, and I really appreciate that. Really helped me understand a lot more of what you guys do and helped me re-highlight my commitment to public safety for our residents.
Well, thank you, Councilman Elswafi. I am, I'm really pleased because as, as you know, that, that is something that I had asked our police chief and indicated in our first meeting of the council. And two of our members have already completed it. We are working through the time. And it's really important for us as we allocate over $46 million of the budget to our police department. And when we have the climate that we've had in the, in the country over the, nationally over the last few years, to actually go on a ride along. That's why I asked the chief, and he had obliged. And I'm glad it's being done and safe and, and timeframes. But I'm going to, Aaron does have the record of 18 hours, so we're going to have to keep up with that.
Well, I'm not done yet.
You're not done? Okay, good. But I, I think it's, it's great that each one of us do that. I know it's time, we have to make time for it. And you need to know what the police officers are doing. And it's a very, very important part of service for our community.
I will note that, you know, there was a call where a resident wasn't breathing. And I witnessed firsthand the heroic actions of our Dearborn Police and Fire working together.
That's excellent. Very, very good point.